I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brockman?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez? Mr. Duran Harris?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
Ms. Keith?
Here.
Mr. Legori?
Here.
Dr. Patel?
Here.
And Ms. Toth?
Here.
Do we have a quorum? Gary, would you mind reading?
Sure.
The board statement, please?
Mrs. Gonzalez just arrived.
Oh. Oh, she did?
Yeah, that's right.
Want to start the meeting?
Yeah, we were looking for you.
You want me to do it, or you want?
Yes, please.
Okay, sure. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Friday, December 21st, 2021, in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the board office, Old George's Road, North Brunswick; mailed to the Home News Tribune, Sentinel, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members.
I'm going to take this opportunity now to administer the oath of office to our new members and to our returning members.
And I will come down and take photographs.
Yes. Well, during here, we're going to start off with Mr. Brockman. Wonderful. So you're just going to repeat after me, Mr. Brockman? Do you guys want to stand over there? Am I recording?
The microphone, there we go.
Aye? I, Dave Brockman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people. So help me God. I, David Brockman, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter...
And I am not disqualified...
Pursuant to state law...
Pursuant to state law...
Nor disqualified...
Nor disqualified.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey state law.
Due to a conviction of a...
Or offense.
Or offense.
And that I will faithfully, impartially...
And that I will faithfully...
And justly perform all the duties of that office.
And justly perform all...
According to the best of my ability. So help me God. You guys ready? Thank you. So, on your return? Yeah? Yes. Thank you. Okay, there. Thank you. Now, we're going to move to Dr. Patel. Hi, how are you? Good afternoon or good evening? So here we go. Oh, now, ready? Aye, Dr. Patel? Aye, Dr. Patel. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States... That I will support the Constitution... And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey... And that I will bear true faith... And that I will bear true faith... And allegiance to the same... And allegiance to the same... And to the governments established in the United States... And the governments established in the United States... And this state... And this state... Under the authority of the people. And the authority of the people. So help me God. I, Dr. Patel... I, Dr. Patel. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear. That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law... That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law... For the office of member of a Board of Education... For the office of member of a Board of Education... And that I am not disqualified as a voter... And that I am not disqualified as a voter... Pursuant to state law... Pursuant to state law... Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime... Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime... Or offense listed in New Jersey state law... Or offense listed in New Jersey state law... And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly... And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly... Perform all the duties of that office... And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly... According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. There you go. All right, on to the third. Mr. Stephen Wen.
Bring up your family. Bring up your family, of course, anyone you want. Only shouldn't be. Oh.
Ready again? Okay. I, Stephen Wen...
I, Stephen Wen.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance...
The same...
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States...
And to the governments established...
And this state...
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Stephen Wen...
I, Stephen Wen.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
For the office of member of a Board of Education...
For the office of member of the Board of Education...
And that I am not disqualified as a voter...
And I am not disqualified as a voter...
Pursuant to state law...
Pursuant to state law...
Nor disqualified...
Nor disqualified.
Due to a conviction of a crime...
Due to a conviction of a crime...
Or offense...
Or offense.
Listed in New Jersey state law...
Listed in New Jersey state law.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all the duties of that office...
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Get an official document that I need to have signed. And last, but not least, we have Ms. Zollick. All right, here we go. I, Ms. Zollick... I, Ms. Zollick. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States... That I will support the Constitution of the United States... And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey... And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey... And that I will bear true faith and allegiance... And that I will bear true faith and allegiance... The governments established in the United States... And to the governments established in the United States... And this state... And this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. So help me God. Ms. Zollick? I, Ms. Zollick. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear. That I... That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
Office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter.
And that I am not disqualified.
Pursuant to state law.
Pursuant to state law.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction of a crime.
Or office listed in state law.
Or office listed in state law.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations! And that be also official. I believe now we have changing of seats. So we ask our new Board members to join us up on the dais. And we thank our previous Board members for their service. Mrs. Gonzalez, our Board President, and Mr. Anthony Brooks.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So the next item on our agenda is number seven.
Mrs. Hock, don't forget the microphone. Bring it forward, closer to you. There you are.
I have to say, not many, not many times has anyone told me to.
It's the first for everything, Mrs. Hock.
I thought a great teacher would beg to differ with you. So on number seven, we will see the results, the statistics of our election results. The number of registered voters, as you can see, was over 29,000, and 11,367 votes were actually cast. If we turn the page, if you are following along on your agenda, you can see the names of the people who were actually candidates for the position of Board of Education, Mr. Wen, Dr. Patel, Mr. Brockman, and Ms. Zollick was actually a write-in candidate. We only actually had three on the ballot, but Ms. Zollick had the most write-in votes, and you can see there that she is now our fourth Board member, being elected or being put into, into our Board today. So those are the results.
I move to approve the annual school elections.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? The results are accepted. Now, I'm going to take nominations for the President of the Board of Education.
Ms. Hock, can you clarify? We have some written, some paper here. Are we doing it orally, or are we doing it in writing?
So the first thing that we're doing is taking nominations. What you see in front of you is if we need to get to a vote. And we will first do it in writing, and then I will read the results of the vote.
Okay, well, understanding that we are taking nominations for Board President, I, Elysia James, happily and proudly nominate Mr. Barry Duran Harris for Board President for the 2021, or sorry, 2022 year.
We're not going backwards. It's hard to catch up. Are there any other nominations? Seeing there are no other nominations, there needs to be a motion to close the nomination part, please.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? Well, we only have one person who is nominated for President, so we need a motion.
Motion to elect him? So moved.
Yes. Second. Yes. Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, who seconded it? Oh, thank you. I'll lean. Mr. Brockman.
Yes.
Uh, Mr., well, I guess Mr. Duran Harris.
Yes.
Under Duran.
I think that's a conflict of interest.
I'm going to take that as a yes, sir. Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
Mr. Wen.
Yes.
And Ms. Zollick.
Yes.
Congratulations!
I guess it's up to me now.
We can actually move you to the presidency, sir, if you want to put your name tag, and we can do an official. Yes, we would love that, please. Love symbolic gestures.
And Mr. Duran Harris, you're going to New Jersey.
Wield the power wisely!
You sure can. Should be that one, yes.
At this time, I'd like to open the nominations for Vice President.
I, Ms. Haley Toth, would proudly and happily nominate Mr. David Brockman for Vice President.
Any other nomination? Can we have a motion to close the nominations, please?
So moved.
Second. And can I have a motion? Oh, oh, sorry, so sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now the nominations are closed, so now that we have a nomination for Vice President, we need a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to elect Mr. David Brockman as Vice President of the Board of Education.
Second. Mr. Brockman.
Yes.
Mr. Duran Harris.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Mr. Legori.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Toth.
Yes.
Mr. Wen.
Yes.
And Ms. Zollick.
Yes.
We have a new Vice President. Yep. We'll do the shuffle. Grab this name tag. Perfect.
Mr. Legori, you take item 14, please.
I would like to move to approve the Code of Ethics for School Board Members as listed on pages three and four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any? Do we need to do a roll call on the ethics, or?
No.
No. All right. Any opposed? Any discussion? We've accepted the, the Code of Ethics.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. At this time, I'd like to open a public session on any matter, so if anybody would like to approach the Board, we just ask that you come to the podium, sign in, and state your name.
Brooks, former Board Member.
Oh, that would be ours, thank you. We're always prepared.
Always prepared, that's very good. I want to just.
Pull that off, if you want. You can bring it, the microphone will come off if you want to lift it up, if that's easier for you. There you go.
So I, I wanted to say congratulations to the newly-appointed Board. And I want to say congratulations to Barry, well-deserved presidency, and to Mr. David Brockman. Congratulations, well-deserved. It's been a pleasure being a Board Member here for three, three terms, nine years. We've, as a team, we've accomplished a great deal. We endured a lot. We've gone through a lot. We've triumphed over a lot, and it's only because we came together as a team. For eight and a half years, I had the pleasure, and I'd be remiss not to thank Dr. Brian Zikowski for his leadership and role of superintendent here, where it was a pleasure working with him, great deal of success. And for the past six months, Mr. Deloka, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I'm certain that you will experience great success here, and the students that matriculate in this school district are being left in great hands. And I'm excited. About things to come. I wish I had more time to work with you. This past six months have been very enjoyable. Very exciting, because you have an opportunity to put your own fingerprint on the district. And I'm excited about things to come. And I wish you all the very best of success, and I'm excited for the, the children and the town of North Brunswick. And it's great to see the team that is assembled here today, and I wish you all the very best. All right? Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. At this time, we'll be going into closed session, whereas, excuse me, Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows, as legal matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can go into closed session.
All right, so family members, we'll, we'll be back to close up the meeting if you, you don't have to stay, but we'll, we should be brief.